Welcome to the February 8, 2016, meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. Could we have the roll call, please?
Council Chair McCoslin.
Here.
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Grenon.
Here.
Counselor Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Lennon.
Here.
Counselor Ray.
Here.
And Counselor Sullivan.
Here. Wonderful, thank you. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is the presentation of the Ralph Gould Award, and I'm happy to have Counselor Jessica Sullivan give the presentation to this year's recipient. Thank you, Chairman McCoslin. Before proceeding with the presentation of the Ralph Gould Award to Norman Jordan, I'd like to recognize Norm's family and friends who are here tonight. His son Greg is here. If you'd please stand for everyone. And there are friends, there are members of the Cape Elizabeth Historical Preservation Society here. Would you please stand so the council can recognize you? Any other friends that are here that I'm -- or the senior citizens, perhaps, Advisory Commission? Okay. All right. Thank you. The Ralph Gould Award was established in 1986 and was named for the late Ralph Gould to recognize his community service and subsequently to recognize those who provide community service in the same spirit as Ralph Gould. Norman is the 27th Cape Elizabeth citizen to receive this award since its inception, and he joins a distinguished and diverse group. Norman is a lifelong resident of Cape Elizabeth. He graduated from Cape Elizabeth High School in 1953 and served in the United States Army in the later 1950s before returning home to Cape Elizabeth. When his father died in 1985, Norman moved from Shore Road back to the farm where he grew up at the corner of Ocean House and Fowler Road. Norm has been an active volunteer citizen. He served on the First Library Planning Committee from 2006 to 2008. He campaigned to keep Fort Williams free when the town was considering parking fees, and he served most recently on the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission and on Cape Elizabeth's 250th Anniversary Committee. Norm is a descendant of Cape Elizabeth's original settler, the Reverend Robert Jordan, and he has been heavily involved with the Jordan Family's national organization and has been their contact in Cape Elizabeth. Norman has been a member of the Cape Elizabeth Historical Preservation Society for many years, and he is a past president. He's been managing the sizable Jordan collection for almost 10 years. He is well-known for generously availing himself to many people wanting to learn more about the history of Cape Elizabeth or, for example, the history of the old farmhouse they just bought. Norm's farm is a longstanding agriculture business and still operates in the manner of the best of Cape Elizabeth's old-time traditions. His farm stand sells flowers and raspberries by the honor system. He's recently added Christmas trees and sold some this year also by the honor system. He told me that a gentleman came by in a rush, right before Christmas, to buy a tree but had forgotten his wallet. Norm told him to drop off the payment when he could. No payment came, and Norman thought, "Oh, well, I guess that's that." However, a check did arrive in the mail from out of state on January 26. His farm is locally famous for flowers and has been for several generations. It's not uncommon for someone now living away to stop by and tell Norman that they used to pick flowers at his farm when they were growing up. Norman's flower gardens have touched people's lives in ways that most of us are unaware of. Last summer, a rather poignant event occurred relating to Norman's flower gardens. A gentleman in his 60s stopped by to select two large bouquets of flowers. Norman later found out that the man's mother had recently died, and she herself had picked flowers on Norm's farm for many years. When she could no longer drive, her family would bring her to Norm's and help her pick flowers. The family burned the two bouquets of flowers, mixed those ashes along with their mother's ashes, and scattered them all together. Norman, ever the historian, is a well-traveled farmer and has been to many faraway places such as Morocco, which, he told me when I was chatting with him, was the first country in the world to recognize the United States as an independent nation and that we established our first foreign embassy there. Norman's love and knowledge of Cape Elizabeth's history are legendary. He has been a valuable resource to many Cape citizens, those of us who have lived here for years and those who have just arrived. Members of both the Cape Elizabeth Historical Preservation Society and the 250th Anniversary Committee and the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission have shared that Norm's stories of Cape's history always bring tremendous perspective and fun to the business at hand. Over the years, Norm has served Cape Elizabeth citizens in many ways, such as local farmer, historian, activist, and archivist, and always with a touch of humor and warmth. On behalf of the town -- excuse me, on behalf of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council, I'm delighted to present the 2016 Ralph Gould Award to a beloved local legend, Norman Jordan. Please join us in congratulations. Excuse me, I've asked Norm if he would say a few words.
I don't usually say a few words. I usually drag it out for half an hour or so. I've got two cousins on the council there, and I think if I did a little digging, I can find a third.[452.12][452.12](laughter) This family thing is an addiction. Lots of times I'll be -- had something I should be doing, but I'll go on the computer looking for somebody that got married in Nebraska, 1822 or something. Yeah, that story about the ashes. Yes, that day, my ex-wife was there, and my youngest grandchild, my little girl, so she was probably eight at the time, they took her down to the kettle cove. And they all came back and told me about it, that she says, "There were a group of people there obviously splitting ashes." And one of the men said, "Oh," she got in my eyes. And then a week later, two weeks later, I went out there one day, there was a man out there just kind of walking around, maybe picking some flowers. And he said, "My mother used to come here all the time, and we picked them," the same story. It was the same people that my ex-wife saw for the ashes. I thought it was nice. Yes. A lot about Cape Elizabeth. When I was in school, that was a stage, a pretty good stage, too. It had curtains and the drop curtains and everything. I can't remember the name of the play, can't think, but I meant to look that up. In the senior high school, I was a senior in high school, we were senior class, I always put a play on here. I was stage manager. I don't know how much well I did.[564.16][564.16](laughter) My flower gardens, you know, some of you ladies and men even picked flowers there. I just sent in the orders for seeds a couple days ago. And I get a lot of people talk, tell things. And one lady, obviously Spanish, a lady said, "She's picking flowers, it's the first time she's ever picked," so I went out and talked to her. And I said, "First time you ever picked flowers?" She said, "Yes." I said, "Well, that's, you know, that's nice, you have a good..." She's enjoying it very much and very nice here, perfect English. She must be an English teacher someplace. And I said, "Well, she said, 'The first time you ever picked.'" "Yes, yes." And I said, "Well, where are you from?" And she said, "Bolivia." And I said, "Well, I raise a lot of flowers in South America." And she said, "Not where I live, nothing but rocks nights, it was up in the high Andes." Another lady once kind of grinned at me and said, "You're doing this all wrong." And I said, "Yeah?" She says, "Well, yes, you should be giving us these flowers free." And charges $50 an hour for the therapy.[652.66][652.66](laughter) And then one more. Lady this summer told me, she says, "Well, we -- my husband got transferred here to Southern Maine last year, and we came and rented a house because we wanted to be sure we bought what we wanted. And we made a pact, and he looked for houses and I looked for houses that we knew both would like, and, you know, two or three, three or four weeks sometime." But she said, "I had the last choice. It was up to me which one we did, no matter what." So she said, "We went and looked at these two places, one in the Cape and one in Falmouth." And she got back to her husband, and she says, "No, go take the one in Cape Elizabeth because that's where the flower garden is."[703.66][703.66](laughter) And I don't know. Yeah, my family, I never -- I was in the fourth grade, which was right corner window over there, and the bank in the right there, but there was nothing but bank of gravel. There was no sidewalk, no steps, no nothing. And we were out there playing marbles. It was evidently not too, I don't know what the date would have been, we'd find out. Somebody opened the window, leaned out, said, "Germany surrendered." I don't know what the window, Germany, it must have been warm enough, so we were playing marbles. A few other. Miss Story had the upstairs windows, upstairs, big room. She couldn't weigh 98 pounds, wringing wet, and I'll tell you, some of these guys were scared to death of her because she would, this was 1946, '45, '47, '48, she would, I see, I saw the stone wall cellar down here, where the men's room, boys' room was. She had this kid, and she grabbed him by the scarted neck and banged him up against that wall hard enough so he fell on the ground, but she let go of him. And you didn't go home and tell your father, your parents, that she hit you because he'd had it 25 years before. And she taught another 25 years after, I think after I went through with her. When the Yoki Alexander came ashore, went to school, it was all right then, nine o'clock, but the wind was still blowing hard. She thought we ought to see that. And she gets bus driver and loaded us in the bus and took us down there. No authority, just her doing, the bus driver, and we saw him. I remember years later, late enough so I was working at Jonesy's, I saw, and of course in those days there wasn't much between the high school, the old 1930 building and here. I saw several people, young graduates, come up through there, knew some of them, they'd come up through there. They were coming here to say goodbye to Miss Story because she taught them something. She had a sister that taught in Scarborough, and they traveled every summer. One man said, "He said, 'My wife and I were sitting at a restaurant in Italy someplace, and we looked over there and Miss Story, their sister, sat at the next table to us.'" Yeah, the Jordan family was very deep. We have probably rolling up in Lewiston probably has got 40,000, 40,000, odd thousand descendants from that one couple that got married on Richmond's Island in 1643. Not all with Jordan name, of course, but we chased them. And they traveled all over the world. Those little tiny ships, some of them. I had one, and women were, the sales didn't like females aboard ships, but the captain's wife could go. And if the captain's wife had children, the first mate's wife could go to help take care of the children. Somebody said, "Well, maybe she was a schoolteacher." And one of distant cousins had three children. One bought dark side Calcutta, India, another bought South Pacific, at sea, South Pacific, the third bought dark side London, England. They really got around.[962.00][962.00](laughter) And I'm not going to tell the story, but 1860, a family chartered a clipper ship out of New York to go to Hong Kong, and I thought that the captain was married to a Jordan girl. Turned out to be wrong. Unusual name, too. They had a big birthday celebration in the middle of the Indian Ocean. The girls, one of the girls was 12, about 20-something people in the family aboard the ship. The little girl was 12, and the sea captain's birthday was the same day. The man, he owned the boat, the captain, he was, she was 12, and he was maybe 32. I knew immediately mine was wrong because my man would have been 60s. And that girl had a birthday in the middle of the Indian Ocean in 1860, was Franklin Delano Roosevelt's mother.[1031.32][1031.32](laughter) That's why there's so much about it on the internet. I think probably that's, although I could go for a long time. Thank you. When they came over to see me, she came over to see me.
I did.
And she told me, and I said, "What? Who? Me? Why?"[1051.54][1051.54](laughter) Thank you.
Before you leave, we get a picture of the just maybe committee.
I didn't make a face.[1067.32][1067.32](laughter) Want to do one with the other?
I'll shake it.
I was, some of us. Some of us had our kitchen, park, and the children were in the living room watching all the lights, and somebody says, "I'm doing what they're talking about."[1111.32][1111.32](applause)
Congratulations from all of us. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Town Council reports and correspondence. I have a couple of quick items tonight, just in case there is anyone who doesn't already know this. We had a ribbon cutting this morning at the library. Went very well. That building looks fabulous. It is open for business. If you haven't been in, I hope you'll stop by. I think it's a tremendous addition to the town center and really a wonderful resource for our community. And thanks to all the folks who've been involved in that process.[1163.32][1163.32](applause) All right, I'll clap, too.[1166.32][1166.32](applause) Thank you. Also, I wanted to mention that for those of you who hadn't heard this already, I'm sure it's not news for most people in the community, I'm sorry to say that our school superintendent, Meredith Netto, has announced that she'll be leaving us this summer. We wish her well in her new position in New Hampshire. In the meantime, I know the folks on the school board are working on, I think they've hired a consultant to help them work on the process for finding her replacement. And last but not least, I also wanted to mention that we had, on the council, we had an email today from the chair of the school department letting us know that the proposed schedule of the process for the adoption of the FY 2017 budget, that document is now available online if you look on the school department website and give you an idea of what the process is over the next couple of months as they're working through their budget procedures. That's it from my end. I suspect there are a couple of council members who have something they'd like to report on tonight. Yes, Patty?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to add my accolades to all those that were involved in the opening of the library. If you haven't been, it's absolutely spectacular. I would encourage everybody to go. And as the liaison to the library trustees, I just wanted to let the community know that there is, the staff and all the trustees worked really, really hard putting together an opening month of events. We have 28 days of events in 20, excuse me, 28 events in 28 days, and things like robotics demonstration, there's going to be a jazz concert, a piano concert, a winter fest, and more. So I would encourage you just to quickly, there's some flyers about town, but also you can go on to the Thomas Memorial Library.org website, and there is a listing of events there, so please come, enjoy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Just that the ordinance committee will have a meeting at 1:30 on February 23. We'll be continuing our discussion of the boards and commissions ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the finance committee report.
I will defer to Michael. I'll defer to you since I didn't.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the municipal finances thus far are working out pretty much according to plans. There's a few issues with maintenance of equipment that's a little bit over budget, but obviously with the lighter winter thus far, although that seems to be changing. You know, we seem to be having some savings in those areas, but overall, things are in pretty good shape. People are still buying, still continuing to buy new cars, and things are in good shape.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions on that, comments? No? All right, we'll move on to citizen opportunity for discussion of items not on the agenda tonight. Do we have any citizens who wanted to speak? I'll remind you, please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please be respectful of our approximately three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Rich Moran, 62 Cross Hill Road. Just yesterday, I became aware of an article in The Century regarding the Spurwink Rod and Gun Club. Among other issues was mentioned of the club plans to come before the council and seek to have Sarah Lennon recused from all discussions regarding the gun club. Specifically, club officers also will ask during their next appearance before city councils that it recuse Lennon from further participation in deliberations regarding to the club. I strongly object to such an action. Having opinions about an issue does not constitute a conflict of interest. Before I proceed, I should note that I do not know Ms. Lennon or her opinions. I've seen her in a couple of meetings, but I've never spoken to her. Precedent was cited in the case of Jamie Wagner, who was recused for the same reason. I observed that action when it was taken. I feel it was wrong then and still is. Actually, in order to be fair, later Jamie sided with the gun club on most issues that came to the FRC. So further, if we're going to consider recusal for opinions, then I think that should apply also to Caitlin Jordan, who demonstrated her support for the gun club in newspaper articles on the FRC and in council meetings. In conclusion on that first issue, Ms. Lennon was elected to serve, let her serve, and if that's the case, I think we should let Caitlin continue to serve as well. Second issue, to lead off on it, has to do with the firing range committee. Chapter four of the Boards and Commissions, Section 4-1-4, states that no member of any board, commission, or committee shall introduce, speak, or vote on any motion or issue in which he has, he or she has a conflict of interest, direct or indirect. My concern about the firing range committee and its expectations going forward is that right now, as presently constituted, the entire committee has a conflict of interest. For example, on the committee is Mark Mayone, who's the former president of the gun club, and Ben Marciso, the range training officer, whatever part of his livelihood is based on that. And even Kathy Klein, who is an independent member at large, funded a study of legal issues regarding the gun club. So I think for all of those reasons, we need to take a look at the constitution, what constitutes the firing range committee, and how do we go about having a committee put together that does not have all these built-in conflicts of interest, especially where the president of the gun club is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Town manager's monthly report.
You know, due to the weather, I'll, we'll go a report, and I know we have a lot of folks waiting for other items.
Thank you. Next item is the review of the draft minutes of January 4, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes? Yes, Jessica Sullivan.
Yes, I move we approve the minutes of January 4, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? No? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to item number 33-2016, Rudy's Annual Licenses. It's proposed to approve the annual malt, venus, and spirituous license and special amusement permit. Is there a motion?
Just a comment before.
Yes.
Yeah, Deborah Lane was away last weekend. I was on, I didn't see the special amusement permit, but I was unsure. They did, in fact, not apply for that, so if someone makes a motion on that, you should not include the special amusement permit.
Okay. Is there a motion? Yes, Sarah Lynn.
I move we approve the annual malt, venus, and spirituous license permit for Rudy's of the Cape at 517 Ocean House Road.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. We'll move on. Our next item is the public hearing on the proposed Village Green zoning amendment. I'd like to again remind people, if you're going to come up and speak to us tonight, please come up to the podium, speak into the microphone, give us your name and your address, please, and again, try to be respectful of our three-minute time limit. With that, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
My name is Ann Carney. I live at 21 Angel Point Road, and I'd like to speak about the proposed amendments related to the Village Green. And I just want to confirm that the proposal dated 1/13/16 is now the one that is subject to the hearing rather than the one that was before the town council previously. Is that correct? The, Michael, would you like to speak to that?
The one that was set for public hearing is the proposal that was presented and the recommendation from the planning board, you know, a month or two ago.
Came to the council, went to the ordinance committee.
Okay, so it's the one that came out of the ordinance committee. That omits the mention of the 100 yards of footage on Ocean House Road. Is that correct? It doesn't contain that?
No.
Okay. There were two posted in the meeting material.
Yeah, there was talk of another amendment. No one has yet offered that amendment. It was included in the materials for the meeting. Counselor Lennon asked that it be included and distributed to the council, and it was posted, but it doesn't have any standing yet because no one has offered it as an amendment yet.
Okay. So the document that was on the website that's dated 9/25/15 is the one that's subject to the hearing?
That was the one that was advertised for a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification. I was under the impression that it was the other one, but I would like just to reiterate the concerns I had voiced previously about the September 25, 2015 proposal, which is that the that the, the, and I actually think it applies to the other one as well, but that the town council did a really nice job in adopting the design requirements that create more of a village feel along Route 77 by having the buildings in the front and the parking in the back. And I feel that actually both of these proposals, again, they, they kind of disrupt that uniformity that we had striven for in the previous amendments to the ordinance. And for example, we can see the effect of the ordinance in buildings like the Little Deli near the high school. It does really create and establish a warm feeling in the middle of our town. And I think that both the proposal that's currently before the council and the one that may be proposed as amendment, my concern about those is that they disrupt that uniformity and that they also don't create standards that allow the town to exert enough control over the approval process that we as a town get what we want out of these town green-type developments. In other words, I don't want us to surrender to developers all of the uniformity and care that we put into the original ordinance, because whatever development happens is going to be with our community for a really long time, and we should just make, make sure that we get what we want out of this ordinance. And I don't think either of those, these proposals are quite there yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
My name is Peter Curry. I live at Stony Brook Road and am Chair of the Planning Board. Just want to say a few remarks in, about the planning board's proposal. We spent quite a bit of time on it, and we tried very hard to recognize the interest of the town in a village green as expressed in the comprehensive plan, and more recently in the town, the town center district report that came out two years ago. So that, that has been the goal of coming up with something in that context that would be useful and meaningful to the town. And I thank the lady who just spoke for her comments about the zoning ordinance, because that has a very definite scheme of a minimum-maximum front yard, which brings the, all the, the developments, the buildings, up close to the street with a landscaped frontage and the parking in the back. And I think the Sea Salt Market is a great example of that. Nothing in our proposal, I don't think, disrupts that, and in fact, it has, makes a minor adjustment to accommodate, because if you put in a village green on Ocean House Road, as the, as the proposal suggests, the, the, the front yard requirement can't be met by the buildings that will frame the green as they would in a traditional village green layout. So it is a facilitative move that lets us adjust that front yard requirement to take into account the village green. The village green, in essence, becomes a front yard servicing the, the people of the town of Cape Elizabeth. So we, we think it's, we also included some fairly rigid design requirements, another good point that was just made. So the 20,000 square feet, minimum frontage depth, and it's part of the, the site plan review process, so the entire design of the village green will be considered in connection with the site plan of the improvements that are being made to the adjoining parcel. We, we think this gives the town the best chance to come up with a first-class, visibly nice village green in the center of town, which was our understanding of what you wanted. Will comments be taken later on this, the proposed amendment, or the alternative? I do have some thoughts on that, but I'm happy to hold them until you consider that if you do.
I will probably allow that, because I think it's helpful for us to have that. If we end up discussing that proposed amendment, then we'd probably take some additional comments.
Okay, so we'll come back for that?
Yes.
Happy to take any comments. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name is Jonathan Sarbeck. I live at 60 Longfellow Drive in Cape Elizabeth. I'm also a member of the planning board with Peter. I just wanted to reiterate, I grew up in Cape Elizabeth, and I, sort of like the Shore Road path, the village green has been something that's been discussed since the early 90s. And when the town center plan came up with their thoughts in 2014, I think it was item number four, if I remember correctly, was creating a village green along Route 77 ideally. I think that was the language that the town center plan, or committee came up with in their plan. So I would urge the council to adopt the ordinance, or the changes to the ordinance that the planning board came up with. I have seen the other amendments. I won't go specifically into any changes since that's not on the table at this moment. But to me, Route 77 is basically Main Street in Cape Elizabeth. It has been for a long time. People who live off of Shore Road, off of Mitchell Road, I would think would share the feelings that when they're going to the high school, they go down Route 77. Scott Dyer's basically the way to the dump for them. I grew up off of Sawyer Road, and I live in Elizabeth Park now, so Scott Dyer's very much, I travel it often, but to me, Route 77 would be the ideal place if this village green was built. One of the things that I think the planning board took a lot of time with over a period of months was shaping the ordinance to sort of facilitate a trade if there was an owner of property that was going to sort of give the town what would turn out to, I believe, be 20,000 square feet, feet of village green, basically, in, give it to the town to own, which is a huge dedication, a huge property, amount of property that somebody would be giving up in order to get sort of the setbacks, I believe changed by 10 feet. We thought that once the town had this village green, that they owned this village green, it would be something that would be a treasure to the community. And I would think that, as the ordinance is written now, addresses all of those concerns and goals that the town has in creating this village green for the town. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing that no one else wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. And we will move on to our council item number 34-2016, the proposed zoning amendment related to a village green. Do we have a motion from a council member? Yes?
After a lovely discussion at last month's, no, sorry, December's ordinance committee meeting, and Peter from the planning board doing a wonderful job describing and explaining several times, over and over, repeated questions about this ordinance, I am pleased to move that we adopt the ordinance as it stands, as we received it from the planning board and the ordinance committee approved.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion? Yes. A second? Thank you, Jessica. Is there any other discussion? Yes, Sarah.
I'd just like to make a procedural clarification. I, I did not request the second one be in our packet. I simply pointed out that it wasn't there. It was my impression that at our former meeting, we all collectively agreed that it would be helpful to take a look at that language and have it available, should we wish it, at this public hearing. So I, I do not want my name on that request. I simply queried Mike why it wasn't there, and then, without my requesting it, he put it, he emailed it to everyone and put it on the website. So I'm feeling unfairly attacked here this evening, as you can tell. So my name is not on the second thing being here, although I, I do remember all of us thinking it was a good idea, and I thank Caitlin and Maureen and Peter for meeting and carving that out.
Thank you. Anyone, yes, Kathy?
So I'm confused. There was an item that was dated January 13th, 2016, that was in our packet. I don't know why it was in our packet. Council Lennon says she didn't ask for it to be there, but it was. I spent a long time over the weekend studying it, not understanding what it was, and not understanding why it was there. So Caitlin's got her hand up, so I'm sure she'll explain, but, so I guess I'm wondering why it was there, why it was in our packet, why we were expected to look at it as an alternative, and who requested it to be there, and who wrote it? And what is the, the reasoning behind the expectation?
Yes, Caitlin?
I can explain. At our meeting, when we set the public hearing, we, as a council, discussed that there was another idea about having it on other roads other than Route 77. And then, as a council, we also discussed how it is to our advantage to have materials prepared ahead of time so that we're not trying to make substantial changes to an ordinance on the fly, writing it down as we go at the public hearing. So it was agreed at our town council meeting that I would meet with Maureen and see if we could come up with something that we could work off of, should the discussion tonight lead in the way that we wanted to make an amendment to the ordinance so that it wasn't just limited to Route 77. And then Peter joined Maureen and I for that meeting, and we came up with this language that would tweak it, but then, once we got into our meeting, we realized that by expanding it beyond Route 77, it creates additional roads, but really, the, the size of the property on those other roads would never be able to meet the 100-foot frontage requirement. So then, some additional information needed to be given so that it would work if we wanted to go down that road. It was created just so that, should the council want to change the ordinance tonight, that there was already some vetting and some explanation and some research done so that we wouldn't be sitting here going, how are we going to handle this? And then, it was decided, I believe, at the council meeting, that it would be included so that people could review it ahead of time. I believe somebody actually requested it, I can't remember who, requested that they be able to look at whatever language was created ahead of time. I would love to go back to the video and see, but I do remember somebody requesting that. So that was why we had the extra language in there, just in case. And it was inappropriate to share it with just the council and not put it in the packet if it was something that we were going to be reviewing. So it was included in the packet so that the whole town could look at it.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Unless we have anything else to discuss on that proposed language from January 13th, is there any other discussion specific to the amendment that is on the table right now and that we've had the motion and the second on? Yes, Jessica?
Well, I'd like to add to what has just been said on this other document, with your permission.
Yes, please.
I think that, that we've had a, what I see as a process problem, and I think this was confusing in its, in its addition to our materials. I mean, I, I am looking at the email that Sarah Lennon asked that it be put in the meeting packet. You know, the ordinance committee on December 17th unanimously approved the December, the planning board's amendment. We went through it line by line. We had a detailed presentation from Peter Curry, the chairman of the planning board. And so, you know, it was confusing to have a change in, of heart by two ordinance committee members at that point, or later, by January 4th. So what occurred between December 17 and January 4th, I, I'm at a loss to understand. So I think that going forward, it would be very important for counselors to be vigilant about the process in which, by which we deal with all of our issues so that we can have full transparency in our deliberation. I, I understand what was likely behind this, but I think it was unfortunate in how it was handled. And so I, I would like to express that.
I thank you. Yes?
I just, I think what I'm hearing this is, I, with listening to what Caitlin said and remembering what went on in our meeting, I think there was a specific request for it to be done in this way, and then it didn't show up. I, for one, got to say that I was like, where was that other green, as I named it, Green Village, portion of it? So, because I thought there was going to be dialogue potentially about that. I think we have to assume that with us as a council, our tensions are right, and we just had a wrong outcome in this, in this particular case here. And I think it's really important that we, that we, as we work together, we're all in this community, that we look at, again, the intention was correct and right, and that the outcome was wrong. And that's what I think we, if we want to delve into, and I could give you five points of why I think that this other amendment is the wrong thing for our community, and that the proposed Village Green amendment as it stands is the right way, you know, for many, many reasons. And I don't know if I need to give that background right now, but I guess I would just want to say that I, I think it's important that we look at that this was an opportunity for dialogue.
Thank you. Yes, Kathy?
I'm not completely satisfied with the answers. There was a proposal made by two counselors, and I, for one, did not agree that it needed to be changed. I want to know who wrote this proposal. Apparently, nobody seems to want to take ownership of this, and I want to know who wrote it.
Yes.
Maureen wrote it, because in our last council meeting, maybe we need to tee up the video and watch what happened. The council as a whole agreed that it, exactly what Caitlin said, it would be helpful to have specific language, should we want to look at it. We then all tasked Caitlin, as the Chair of Ordinance, to go back, meet with Maureen again, and see if they could tweak the language. It turns out tweaking wasn't possible, but that was the intent. Could they tweak the language so that it would include the possibility of allowing more than one property to have this option, to have a village green? Because we all agreed, all three of us, Jessica, in the ordinance committee meeting, that if this was a great idea for one, why not broaden it out to have more? That, you know, we could have more than one village green. This wasn't exclusive. I believe you yourself said that. So we tasked Caitlin to go back to Maureen, which she readily agreed to do. They, they followed the instructions of the council as a whole, and then I, like Patty, had heard that people would want to look at that. I can imagine if we didn't share it with everyone, that that would be a big problem too. So again, I'm, I'm, I'm quite perplexed by people's lack of trust, and, you know, you got to, you got to assume best intent. I'm actually dumbfounded that Caitlin's getting pounded on for this. She, she, she went the extra mile to do what we requested her to do, and Maureen was the one who drafted the actual language.
Thank you. I'm going to take two more comments, because I see there are two hands raised. I see Caitlin and Kathy both. I'm going to take Kathy first, and then Caitlin, if we're talking about process. And then, I'd like to redirect our attention to the order of business at hand. I understand the concern for process, and I certainly understand the concern that Jessica has expressed about following process and about transparency, and I want to make sure we are all very clear about that. Having said that, again, two comments, and then I want to get back to the issue at hand. Kathy?
I would like to ask for Maureen to come up and indicate whether she wrote this or not.
Yes, if you'd like to come up and speak to us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In my opinion.
Kathy, would you like to repeat that?
Yes, please. Maureen, I would like to ask if you wrote on page four, item four, which is part of the January 13th, 2016, Green Village ordinance amendment.
So there are two amendments before you. One is called the Village Green Amendment. That was prepared by the planning board, recommended also by the ordinance committee. And then there's a second amendment called the Green Village Amendment. The Green Village Amendment was something I formatted. I did not draft it. I received language from Counselor Jordan. We had a good discussion about potential shortcomings with that language, but I was asked to prepare it, and I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, did you want to say something else, or did you have another question?
My only comment was about including in the packet that if our discussion tonight had gone down that road, that I think our citizens would have been disappointed if all of a sudden we whipped out something that had been asked to be prepared and they hadn't seen it ahead of time. When we're talking about process and transparency, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Okay, back on task, on the proposed zoning. Yes, go right ahead.
I want to comment on this, as it's my, one of my responsibilities to decide what gets posted online. You know, I've been at this 30-odd years. If a counselor has ever asked If a counselor has ever asked, either in the electronic age or before the electronic age, to forward something to the whole council, we do it. You know, it's, every counselor has the right to do that, and it's a responsible thing to do because it also does add full transparency in terms of making sure that other counselors and the public knows that maybe an amendment would come up. And when a citizen raised the issue earlier, Anne Carney, it was asked, you know, what's the, what's the actual public hearing? We clarified that. But, you know, I would hate to think we get into a situation where counselors can't ask us to distribute stuff to other counselors, either, you know, that relates to a meeting agenda item, either electronically or otherwise. And, you know, in this case, we got an email. It was requested by a counselor to, to put, oh, I thought we were just a few more steps, a few steps more along, to avoid any online conversation, should we just put both versions in the meeting packet? That's what we did. I don't say any harm with it. I think everyone should know what should possibly come up, you know, if things are floating about. And I think, you know, I agree with what Caitlin said. Otherwise, you know, I don't think we would be practicing transparency. So, I would just hate to leave a message to, you know, unless you want to give that message, that's fine. But, you know, if you're only going to let the manager decide what goes in the packet, and council is not going to have the right to put stuff there as well, I think that's way too much authority to the town manager. And the council, each individually, should have that right. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Yes, Jessica?
One more comment. This is something that has not been raised, but just for the public's clarification, this alternative amendment that was emailed to us six days ago had not been seen by the ordinance committee, had not been vetted by the ordinance committee. Just so that's clear.
Thank you. Okay, back to the item I believe that is in front of us, that has been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion about that proposed Village Green zoning amendment? Yes?
I would just like to thank again the hard work put in by the planning board. They had four meetings, including a public hearing on this amendment. They spent a great deal of time and a great deal of thought in crafting it, and I would like to thank them for all that effort.
That's great. I would second that, and I would also say the same to the folks on the ordinance committee. I know there's been a lot of work done on this, and I know there has been a fairly long and extensive public process with input from a number of people. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments? Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? Yes? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes, 6-1. Great. We will move on to item number 35-2016, the Fort Williams Park group use requests for 2016. Mike, you'll introduce that?
I'd be happy to. And Bob Malley's here, who is the staff liaison to the Fort Williams Advisory Commission. This gives permission for Cape Elizabeth Little League, for Cape Elizabeth High School, for its rehearsals and commencement ceremony, for Family Fun Day, for the Beach to Beacon Road Race, and for the main chapter of the American Cancer Society Breast Cancer Awareness to, for 5K Road Race, all to utilize Fort Williams for large group uses in 2016.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this item? Yes, Patty?
I move that we approve Fort Williams Park group use request for 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? Nope, that's unanimous. We'll move on to item number 36, 2016, the proposal, excuse me, to engage James Saffian as bond counsel. Mike, you'll introduce this one, too?
Yes, the, one of the town council's responsibilities within the charter is to appoint attorney or attorneys for the town of Cape Elizabeth. One of those attorneys is the bond counsel. Bruce Cogswell has been a long, long time bond counsel, actually taking the place of a gentleman named Charlie Allen, Tom Allen's father. Some of you remember Congressman Tom Allen. And, you know, Pierce Atwood has been our bond counsel for generations, and Jim Saffian is now the lead bond counsel at Pierce Atwood, and I would recommend that he be appointed to be the successor bond counsel.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Thank you, Kathy?
Hi. I would like to move that we accept James Saffian as bond counsel, replacing Bruce Cogswell, that we would like to thank very much for his service for 30 years as our bond counsel.
Thank you. Is there a second? Was that a second? Yes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments or questions for Mike? I'll just say, he appears to be highly qualified and highly competent. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on. Item number 37, excuse me, the proposal to bond improvements to the recycling center. Mike, you'll introduce this item, too?
Yes, thank you, Chairman McCoslin. This item would authorize expenditure of up to $1.4 million for improvements and upgrades for the town's recycling center in the issuance of bonds. It is subject to a proposed citizen vote in June of this year, as the charter provides that any expense over $1 million needs to be reviewed and considered by the voters. The bond counsel, recently appointed, has drafted a bond resolution for your consideration. The town council's had a couple of different workshops on this, receiving the report of the Long Range Solid Waste Study Committee. And you had a public hearing last month on it as well, and asked that it be put off to this month to actually prepare the bond resolution, and is now before your consideration.
Thank you for that. Is there a motion for this item? Yes, Jessica?
Thank you for that privilege, Chairman McCoslin.
Yes.
I move that we approve the proposed bond for the pool... Good grief.
Almost. We're not quite there yet.
I move that we propose, that we approve the proposal to bond improvements to the recycling center.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes, Jamie?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments? Yes, Caitlin?
My only comment is that I will be voting for the bonding for this, but I don't want it to lead people to think that it's my approval of the recycling center plan, just that I don't want, should the voters vote to approve this in June, I don't want this to be held up by delaying it in any way, so approving the bond ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Nope? All in favor? Any opposed? Nope? Unanimous. Thank you. And thank you for that motion, Jessica. And we'll move on to number 30...
It was.
We'll move on to number 38, the proposed bond for pool improvements to humidity control system and disinfectant system at the Don Richards Community Pool. Mike, would you like to say anything about that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman McCoslin. This item would authorize expenditures up to $700,000 to replace the humidity control unit at the Donald Richards Community Pool, and also for a new disinfectant system. The town council began to discuss this as a finance committee last April, looked at some short-term solutions, thought it was more important to look at it long-term since the humidity control unit had been failing and was showing that it needed, needed quite a bit more work than just a temporary fix. Further, throughout the process, a number of folks indicated concern with the chlorine levels in the Donald Richards Pool, and wanted us to look at alternatives to the maintenance of the pool water by chlorine. Greg Marles, the facilities manager, worked with Harriman Associates, who were the original designers of the pool, as, you know, the pool that's now there and this equipment, and has come forward with a new system that will reduce the chlorine about, up to 90%. So, will make for a much more enjoyable pool experience for individuals. It'll replace outdated equipment. Because this is under $1 million, the final vote is up to the town council, and it would not specifically go to the voters for approval under the charter. And Greg is here if you have technical questions, because I'm not the technical guy on this.
Understood. Thank you. Is there a motion for this item? Jessica?
The one I tried to make earlier. I move that we approve the proposed bond for pool improvements to humidify, to the humidity control system and disinfectant system at the Donald Richards Community Pool.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Thank you, Patty?
Second.
Any discussion and any questions for our facilities director, Greg Marles? Yes?
I just wanted to thank Greg for his presentation to us recently at our workshop. And this is a big-ticket item, but this is a, what I view as a vital community asset. And pools are very expensive, that's just the way they are. And I think that it's wise to be proactive on what is actually happening with that, in that engineering system. So, I am very much in favor of approving this.
Thank you. Yes, Kathy?
At the risk of sounding like I'm repeating myself, I'd like to thank Greg as well. We had some questions for him. It's expensive, but I also think about that the senior citizen groups like it, the young children like it, and everybody in between. And it's been a very popular item for years and years. So, as much as I'd like it to be $10,000, I recognize that it is not, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any questions for Greg? Nope? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. That was unanimous. We're keeping you busy, I know. Good. That's good. Good attitude. All right, we'll move on to item number 39-2016, and this is the approval of the warrant and ballot question. And Deb, I think you'll be introducing this item.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, this is the warrant for the June 14 election, which would not only include the town recycling center referendum, but also the school budget validation referendum. The warrant is posted in the town in various places at least seven days prior to an election. It also will include a specimen ballot when it is posted as well. Just so everyone knows, the school budget questions would be the approval of the school budget validation referendum, the non-binding expression of opinion for the school budget, too high acceptable or too low. And also, this year, voters will be voting whether or not to continue the budget validation referendum process. If you recall, by state law, the voters vote on that every three years. Again, it would be whether to continue the validation referendum. If it's voted down, then the process would return to the town council having final approval of the, of the school vote. So again, this is time to do that again. And then, the recycling center question, shall the council vote the expenditure of up to $1.4 million for improvements and upgrades to the town's recycling center be approved? There is a treasure statement included as well, and then the absentee ballot processing information is recruited by law. This warrant was prepared by myself in concert with attorneys Leahy, Saffian, and the town manager. So everyone has signed off on it. There were several iterations of it, just to make sure that everything was included. Also, you'll see that we'll use the warrant to also produce the ballots as well. So, this warrant is ready for your council approval this evening.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for approval of this warrant and ballot question as it's explained and written in our agenda tonight? So moved. Thank you. Kathy?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, or are there any questions? Nope? All in favor? That's unanimous, and we will move on. We will move on to item number 40, which is the proposed grant for the paving of Two Lights Road. Mike, I think this is your item to introduce?
Yeah, this is a program, thank you, that PAX has, that occasionally, we can get some money to pay half the cost of paving certain roads that are within the PAX system. One of those roads is Two Lights Road. Bob has prepared the grant application, and I'm pleased that they have awarded it, subject to the town agreeing to the partnership agreement. And if this is a $242,000, up to $242,000 project, the state would pay 50%, we would pay 50%. If any, if it ended up costing over $242, which we don't expect, we would pay 100% of any overage.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this item, number 40, the proposed grant for the paving of Two Lights Road? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? Any questions for Mike? And we have Bob Malley here tonight, if anyone has any questions for him as well. Nope? And I have one question, the timing on that, Bob? Come up and speak, that would be great.
It's our hope for an early spring. You wouldn't know it by looking outside tonight.
Isn't that what the grant had told us, it was going to be an early spring?
That's correct. We'd like to do it before Memorial Day, if at all possible, just to avoid the crowds with the restaurant down at Lobster Shack. But if not, we hope to do it before June 15.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes?
Quick question. Is this the same type of project that was done on Mitchell Road last year?
Yes, via shim and an overlay.
A one-day kind of...
Depending on the weather. Sometimes it can be two or three.
Not all summer.
No, not at all.
Not until they arrive.
That, too. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Nope? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Nope? That passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on to item number 41-2016. This one also has your name on it. I think Bob will let Mike introduce them.
The truck that plows, among other things, the town hall, the Thompson-Moore Library Lot, the fire station lot, the fire, the police station lot, and odds and ends of the school grounds, has developed tracks in its frame. And if you know anything about trucks, when they develop tracks in their frame, that's not good. You really have to take it out of service. It becomes dangerous. The truck is only about eight years old, seven years old, so, you know, it's about eight years old. You know, not, you know, it's longer than, we usually keep trucks, you know, 20 years. So, this is highly unusual, like, it's a very unusual circumstance. You know, I've never, ever come to the light, to the council, asking for a truck out of schedule. I think this is a particularly unique circumstance, because, you know, these tracks just happen, and I do think it's extraordinary, and it should be considered. The cost to replace the truck is $55,250, and that includes the chassis, the dump body, some warning lights, some frame support, some rear fenders. You know, we looked at other options, maybe deferring this or deferring that, and no, but yet, knowing the pressures that are on the capital improvement plan in the upcoming budget and beyond, it just didn't strike me that that was, I didn't want to get further behind the eight ball in terms of those projects. So, you know, Bob and I looked at this, and we are recommending that it be replaced at the cost of $55,250, and that the funds come from the unassigned fund balance. So this is, in essence, a new appropriation, unlike the last one, Two Lights Road, taking from existing appropriation, this is a new appropriation. Bob is here to answer any technical questions.
Okay.
Or non-technical.
Right. Could I have a motion on this item? Jessica?
I move that we approve the truck replacement.
Thank you. Is there a second? Patty? Thank you. Any discussion? Do we have questions? Caitlin?
Is there a disadvantage to trying to file a claim? I see that it says it might be denied, or in the best case, they might give you book value. I mean, is there a negative to trying for it?
They just didn't seem positive that they would approve the claim, that they would deny it, based on the fact that there wasn't a date of the damage, it wasn't involved in a vehicular accident. So they weren't, they didn't provide any good information or positive information that they would approve the claim.
I mean, you speak of evidence that it's happened in Scarborough, so I mean, maybe there's... there's something that needs to be investigated as to a flaw in that type of truck. So I was just wondering if there's a reason why we're not at least, I mean, even if we approve to buy one, if we still can't file a claim and recoup something back, I'm just wondering what the negative was to trying.
We can always try.
Yes, Jessica?
I had a question, thank you, about warranties on chassis. I mean, maybe for trucks, they're different than from cars. But I imagine you've explored that, but as this is a pretty young vehicle?
Generally, when we purchase equipment, we always specify a five-year warranty. So we always specify a 60-month, which is an extended warranty. We're beyond that. And there have been other issues. Other communities have had similar issues. So we don't know if there's a design flaw, but there's been no recall from General Motors or anything related to that. So...
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Jamie?
I just want to clarify, this is for new purchase? This is not for used?
That's correct.
And is there much of a market for, for owned or?
For the used unit or?
Yeah.
There may be. It actually has more value. We looked at actually purchasing just a cab and chassis and reusing the dump body. But the truck probably has more value with the dump body on it. You'd also then have a new truck with a used body that you'd have to replace before the truck reaches the end of its useful life. So it actually has more value the way it is right now, with the engine and the transmission being in good shape.
Right. Is there much market for a used tire setup?
No, but there may be some leftover units. There may be a unit that someone has on a lot that's not the right paint code or paint color that could be painted where we could achieve some savings.
Other questions?
I guess my only question is, is there, even though the chassis is cracked or broke, is there some value left in the truck that you could unload it and either trade it in or get some value out of it?
We would, we would actually, part of the bidding process, we would request that that be as a trade-in for the new truck.
So this number, the $55,000, is an up to amount, and there could be trade-in value against that?
The value is, the hope, the hope is, expectation would be less than this.
And there's a potential for an insurance claim as well?
Potentially. We can ask. We can inquire. We can file a claim.
Okay. Other comments or questions? No? Great. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on to item number 42, harbor master services. Mike, you'll introduce this item?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Chief Williams oversees our harbor master responsibilities. And, you know, for some time, you know, we don't really feel as though we've been providing the level of service that we would like to. Our harbor master doesn't have a boat. He, you know, I, there just seems to be a better way to do it. One of the council goals for this year was to explore, you know, cooperative arrangements, working with other communities to provide different services. The town of Scarborough, existing harbor master just retired or resigned, retired? I don't know what his age, just left. And they're in the process of hiring a new harbor master. So it seemed to be a good time to explore with them the possibility. So the way this would work is that, you know, if you approve this in concept this evening, we would then go back to Scarborough, work out an interlocal agreement, would then bring back to you the specific appointment of a harbor master since, you know, I believe in the state rules that the municipal offices have the responsibility, practically appointing the harbor master. But basically, we would move from a very part-time harbor master to sharing Scarborough's harbor master, and they would provide about 155 hours of service. The cost would be approximately $1,500 more than the current service. But we believe the service would be immensely improved in terms of the professional experience and knowledge of working with moorings and other issues. The person who Scarborough works for also is the clam warden and, you know, has a few other marine resource officer responsibilities, and is also a sworn police officer, which also, you know, we don't have those problems. But nonetheless, it's not bad habits. I would recommend that you approve, moving forward with this arrangement with Scarborough, with the understanding that we'll bring back to you a, a interlocal agreement and a, an actual appointment of the harbor master. I don't know the name of the new individual that they've hired. But I think overall, it's a good way to go when, you know, we're just not big enough that we can attract a harbor master and supply the harbor master with all the resources that they'd like to have. And by working with Scarborough, we're, we're able to provide a much better service to the citizens, both capable as a better than those that are interested in, in our harbors and mooring areas.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Yes, Jamie?
I move that we accept the proposed harbor master arrangement and give Mike the authority to negotiate that with Scarborough.
Thank you. Is there a second? Patty?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Public comment? Do we take public comments first, or council member comments?
I'd take it from the public first.
Do we have someone from the public who'd like to come up and speak? Yes. Please come right up to the podium. Give us your name and your address.
My name is Nate Perry, 10 Pine Ridge Road. I maintain two moorings and also a limited purpose aquaculture license in Kettle Cove, which is issued by the State Department of Marine Resources. And I would ask, I know that there's some, a lot of considerations, assuming that went into planning this, but I would ask that, that this deal be finalized after the mooring holders have had a chance to think this over and actually taking into consideration other possible alternatives or options, or see how this would actually work, maybe some of the details. Because in talking with some folks today, I don't think, at least from the commercial side of things, nobody really knew that this was going to happen. The gentleman's name who was hired in Scarborough, Ian Anderson, sort of worked under the former guy, Dave Corbeau, who was, who retired last spring. I think it was going into the summer. Anyway. And I do personally see some value, not knowing, again, the municipal and financial side of stuff as well as you guys would. But I do see a value that's very considerable in having somebody with some local knowledge. Maybe it'll be a case where we don't necessarily find that perfect person to do that job. But I think it should be looked at before, I mean, I don't know how the process works. If it's going to move to a vote, it's going to happen anyway. But I think, I think that maybe the mooring holder should have a little more notification and a chance to mull this one over before it could be completely out of their hands. So that's it.
Thank you.
Jody Jordan, 83, Old Ocean Hills Road. I've had a mooring down Seal Cove there since 1980, 1978. I really would appreciate what Nate has asked you, if you would try to find a local person that would be a harbor master. I'm probably just old school. I'd just like to keep everything in the town if we could. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Edward Perry. I live at 10 Pine Ridge Road in Cape Elizabeth. I have a mooring down to Kettle Cove. I've been a commercial fisherman for 40 years. I think those people have worked at the Cove or have had a boat at the Cove, whether they're commercial or recreational. We've had a challenging couple of years as far as working with the mooring situation. Not so much challenge with the moorings, but it was basically a communication challenge. And we're just hoping that that doesn't happen again, that we get somebody from someplace else that, you know, that's very difficult to communicate with. And, and like Jody and Nate, nobody knew about this one. I called some people this afternoon. They had no idea this was going on. And they wanted to put some input in, but it didn't sound like it was really an appropriate time. And we'd hope that maybe you could postpone it one month and send an email to mooring owners so that they could have some input in the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask you one quick question?
Yes.
Give me an idea of how much interaction or engagement you have with the harbor master as a mooring holder?
The past harbor master? Well, we sent him numerous letters and got no response. I sent my money in. I assume I have a mooring because the town cashed my check for two years in a row. So I had nothing to do with him. He told me my mooring was illegal and that I needed to take it out. He told my son he needed to get his aquaculture stuff out. And, you know, we need somebody we can just talk to. And I, if you do the math here, the person is going to spend five and a half hours a week here for half a year. That does sound like, you know, enough time to do things, especially since it also says that, it sounds like the town of Cape Elizabeth will handle all the paperwork, the billing and sending out information and so on. So it could be a good deal for everybody. And as Mike McGovern says, it seems to make sense that they provide the boat, they provide the fuel. It could, it could work. But we really, I think everybody would feel much better if they just had a chance to put some input or hear more about it before it was voted on in a done deal. Otherwise, it's, oh, it's another done deal, and let's see if we can live with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Caitlin?
Just for transparency, I mean, obviously, my family members and lots of them have moorings in Cape Elizabeth. I do not. But just to put it out there, I don't feel as though it affects my decision as to who to hire for a harbor master. But I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you. Jamie?
Thank you for your comments. It's very appreciated, as you're very close to the issue. As a point of procedure, I guess, I would say that I believe that there would be ample citizen opportunity for comment, more specific to the individual and the arrangement when that person, when we go further in the process to actually approve the appointment. So all we're talking about doing here today is moving forward with some negotiation on whether or not this would be the type of arrangement we would want to move forward with. Is that correct?
Mike, do you like to respond to that?
Yeah. Yes. You know, the thinking is, is, you know, we need to really talk with Scarborough, get a little more specifics, and, you know, come back with an interlocal agreement that spells out the situation. I think, I think, I think the interlocal agreement is more important than the actual person, because persons do come and go.
Right.
You know, what you're really looking at is the arrangement of, you know, do you want us to be providing this service through a full-time person in the neighboring community? Or do you wish us to keep the part-time system that I don't think is, personally has worked well in recent years?
So I think that we would, again, have that opportunity for additional comment. And I know that I, and I imagine I speak for everybody here, would welcome that additional comment too. So please do bring it forward when, when that time comes about. I just wanted to add that I've definitely been a big proponent of, you know, community shared resources. I've talked about that with some of you, some people in the community. One of the things I think that is interesting about this is that oftentimes when we talk about shared resources, we're talking about lowering costs. And as Mike pointed out, we're not necessarily lowering costs here. But, you know, another objective is getting better service, which definitely appears to be a clearly met objective with this arrangement. So I think this is a terrific idea to explore further and hopefully put into place.
Thank you, Caitlin. Yes?
I was going to say similar along those lines. One of my goals for this year was to look at ways to combine resources and, and save money. And so in this instance, we're not saving any money. And one of the arguments is that, you know, this way we would have a harbor master who has his own boat. And I do remember several years ago appropriating funds for the current harbor master to purchase a boat through the town. And that never occurred. So I'm just saying, we did put those things out there and they didn't get followed through. So it's not that the town is incapable of providing such resources. It just never happened. I just would hate to see us close the door on something that has worked for how many years, up until our most current harbor master who decided to take things in a different direction that didn't quite work out with those that are using the moorings. I'd also ask that if we're going to move forward, one of the other goals that we've been having as a council is making more people of specific interest aware of topics. And moorings, we have lists, we have addresses, we have email addresses. There's no reason why we can't send out a specific notice to these individuals to let them know that we'll be discussing this further. I was surprised that that wasn't brought up for tonight, since this was really brought out of the blue to many of the members of our community that have moorings. So I would propose and like to see that happen if we're going to be having further discussions and see this on a future agenda.
Thank you. Yes, Sarah?
I just have a suggestion. It sounds like legitimately, these folks would like to be in on the conversation about who gets hired, rather than saying, okay, we're going to vote to harm, and then afterward, sort of let them know. It's not just giving information. They want to be part of the process. So would it be possible, Mike, if we vote this in for the harbor, all the people on moorings, to maybe choose three or four people who could meet with you and this new person, and ask the questions of their concerns? Like, will you check in? Will you be available? I don't know. They could meet each other and at least be part of the process.
You know, through the chair, you know, I would ask the chief of police who oversees the program to do that, to, you know, and I would limit it to four, anyone who wishes to be...
Whatever, yeah.
You know, and if they wanted to have, we don't have a say on who the harbor master specifically is that Scarborough hires. They've already made that decision. But I'd be happy, I'm not sure when the person starts it. But I'd be happy to work with the chief for him to facilitate a meeting, for everyone to meet the gentleman, or woman, whatever it may be, whoever it may be. And, you said it was Ian, Ian, it's a man. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And to move forward and meet that person and have a discussion. You know, I think one of the issues, though, is, you know, I, you know, I don't want to blame this on the, just the current harbor master. My sense is this program hasn't worked well for dozens of years. You know, I've never been pleased with, with this program. And it's supposed to be an enforcement program. And yes, it was supposed to have local knowledge. But in the end, it's an enforcement program. It's, it's a safety program to make sure that the, the moorings are where they're supposed to be. You know, I think, you know, we've had people not paying their mooring fees for whatever reasons. I'm unsure. And, you know, we need a little bit more rigor in this program. And, you know, I think everyone needs to understand that, you know, the systems that we've had that have been very unclear processes has to end. And I think by working with a full-time harbor master, you know, we're going to have a harbor program that follows the ordinances of the town of Cape Elizabeth. And that should be everyone's understanding going forward, whether or not we contract with Scarborough, or we, or we, you know, hired someone, you know, who's an existing, you know, mooring holder. But, you know, my, my inclination is not to have an enforcement position with someone who has an individual stake in the, in the program. And, you know, we've had a number of harbor masters. They've all been good people. But at the same time, you know, I, and I don't want to stop mentioning names, but I think we, we could, you know, we've always had someone's brother or someone's, we had Clarence Schwartz a long time ago, nice guy. We won't mention all the other names in between. But I think we need more rigor in the program, and we need to make sure that the ordinances are being followed.
Thank you. Any other comments?
And I think this is one way to accomplish that, and probably, probably the best way.
Any other comments from any other council members?
One.
Yes, Caitlin?
That, I believe another one of my goals this year was to review the harbor study that was done back in the 80s. I think that it might have a good, it might be a good idea to look at the harbor ordinance as well, considering that where ordinance is written now, there isn't much for standards or rules to follow. The harbor master gets to make them up and set them. And so that might be where some of the concern comes from, is who is going to be the harbor master? Because it's not like they just enforce rules. They get to create them and enforce them.
Okay. Kathy?
I'm going to support this first step. I think that it's important for the reasons that Michael suggested. I also think it's important because we currently have a problem, that we are waiting to hear back from the state, and this continues to be an issue. And I know the councilors are aware of this, because I called them and told them about it. So I think we need somebody who knows how to do their job. Now, whether that's the individual that Scarborough was hired or not, I don't know. But I think that we take the first step, because for any of the issues, I think that we need to have somebody who knows what to do, knows to do, how to do their job, and they don't, and they do it. So I will support this.
Thank you. Jessica?
I'm sitting here listening to all of this, and Council Jordan mentioned her many family moorings, and basically was telling us that she does not feel she has a conflict of interest. But as I'm sitting here absorbing all this, I had a thought, which I think the council needs to entertain. And that is, should Councilor Jordan recuse herself from harbor master discussions, given her involvement with this overriding a harbor master's permit application for a, an individual in Cape Elizabeth and the resulting issues with that? It may be that the council should consider that as a possible recusal on this issue, anything to do with the harbor master services, given what has occurred.
Thank you. I have a question on a point of order. Are you making a request? And my question about point of order is, then, do we need a second on that request? Or that, is it a motion for recusal?
I would say, I think the proper procedure may be that I make a point of order, which I shall make, and move to consider that recusal as a point of order, which I think takes precedence over a motion on the table. But Mike McGovern may know better than that. I'm on that.
You know, what I just heard Councilor say is that she moved to consider whether or not there's a recusal. She didn't, she didn't, that was it.
Okay.
And so, you know, she's making a motion to consider something. I'm not sure what that does.
Okay.
But the very least, you'd need, I think you'd need a second for that.
Are you looking to make a motion to consider, or are you making a motion to ask for a recusal?
Why don't I just make a motion to ask for a recusal, and then if there's a second, then the conversation would then take place?
Second. Kathy?
You have a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? No?
Would, through the chair, would Council Jordan tell us what she thinks?
I don't think I have any conflict of interest in the matter. I think I did something several years ago that I did not, at the time, think was inappropriate or wrong. Somebody came to me and asked if I, as a town official, could sign a piece of paper to move an application forward through the chain of command at the state level. And I did so. And it's come back now, years later, saying that I didn't have the authority to sign such paper. I really don't think it has anything to do with the moving forward with hiring a new harbor master at this point. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any discussion? Are we ready to vote on the motion on the floor, which is to ask the counselor to recuse from this discussion about the harbor master? All those in favor of asking for the recusal? Opposed?
Do I vote? I don't know.
I don't know if you can vote, but.
She can.
Yes, you can. Not refused yet, exactly. Thank you. Okay. All right, so that motion does not pass. So now we're back to discussing the item number 42, the harbor master services. Is there any other discussion about the item on the table right now? The item we're discussing? No? Yes, Caitlin?
A clarification question. Is it possible to know if the mailings to, or the emailings, or some kind of notification is going to be going to future, to the mooring holders as we move forward? I mean, do we need to make that into a motion, or is a nod from Mike that that's going to happen, or?
I'm happy to answer that question. But first, what's the motion on the table?
The, who made?
Jamie. Jamie and Patty seconded to authorize the town manager to negotiate with the towns of Scarborough and bring back an interlocal agreement and appointment of a harbor master.
You're really good. Thank you.
So I understand what the motion is. You know, there's nothing in conflict with that motion to the idea of having a meeting that the police chief would convene with all the mooring holders. We can send out, if we have the email list, I presume we do, but I'm not sure. That's one of the issues. Then we'll, we'll send out a notice and have a meeting before this comes back to the council.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. I would like to thank the three of you for showing up tonight and giving us your input. And I do think it is helpful if you want to participate further in the discussions that we've been talking about tonight. At this point, I think we are ready to take a vote on that item number 42. All those in favor of the motion that Deb just read to us? Any opposed? No? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Again, thank you for coming tonight. We will move on to item number 43, the confirmation of community, excuse me, community services becoming a municipal department. Mike, this one has your name next to it again.
Yeah, the council is very familiar with this issue. You've had a couple of workshops, one individually, one with the school board, and has proposed for you to confirm that community services will become a municipal department effective July 1, and to request the town manager to present a proposed community service budget for the upcoming fiscal year to the town council concurrent with the presentation of municipal budget.
Wonderful. And as you said, we've been discussing this for the last two meetings. And do we have a motion on the table, or do we have a motion from a council member? Yes, Sarah?
I move that we confirm that community service will become a municipal department effective July 1, 2016, and request the town manager to present the proposed community service budget for the fiscal year 2017 to the town council concurrent with the presentation of our municipal budget.
Thank you. Is there a second? Jamie? Thank you.
I second.
Great. Any discussion?
I would like to say, this gets the budget started, but we also would be coming back at some point with an amendment to the administrative code that specifically sets up the language to provide that it's a department, that. And secondly, we're still awaiting the school board's vote on that.
Correct.
So before we begin to actually amend the language, we want to make sure that they're on board as well.
Right. And the school board, I believe, will be voting on this tomorrow night. Any other comments, questions, any more discussion on that item? Nope? All in favor? Any opposed? No? That passes unanimously. We move on to item number 44, the former Thomas Memorial Library Building. And Mike, you'll give us the introduction to this item as well.
And this is, in fact, now the former Thomas Memorial Library Building.
Yes.
And it's proposed to form a four-member committee consisting of two school board members and two members of the council to review reuse proposals for the former Thomas Memorial Library. This is a charge that is not intended to be limited. It's to review reuse proposals for the former Thomas Memorial Library. It does not indicate that there can only be ones that are on the table now. If the committee wishes to look at whatever other proposals, they're certainly within their charge to do that. The committee would report, is suggesting to report back by May 9, that so that it sort of links in with the budget process, so it doesn't wind into the summer. And, you know, if the committee feels that, you know, they need an architect or, you know, some structural issue to be looked at, it provides that we would continue to set aside $25,000 from the existing appropriation in the library building improvement account, and that those funds I would make available to the committee upon request.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for that item? Caitlin, yes?
I move that we form, this committee doesn't have a name. This committee, the review proposals for the new use of the former Thomas Memorial Library Building.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion? Kathy?
It bothers me a tiny bit that we have, that we have a committee made up of two town counselors and two school board members. I don't have a problem with the town counselors, but I wonder about the school board members, if they don't already have, because they have an interest in the building. And should we not have some additional people on this committee? I'm not one of those people that wants big committees, believe it or not, but I am not sure if we are fully representing everybody who might have an interest in the building. I mean, we've seen the school board's proposal, and I sort of got the impression that the reason we were putting this committee together was to ferret out what the school board's proposal was.
Can I just clarify for one second?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I need to clarify this with Mike. I'm, I believe that is a request from the school department, not from the school board. Is that correct? It came to us from the superintendent?
We already got tripped up on this once tonight, on where something came from. Yeah, I got a memo from Meredith with a proposal. I do not know to the degree to which she reviewed it with the school board. She may or may not have, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, the school group, the school something, because the memo still is, has not been explained. So I thought that this group was to find out what the school's proposal was, but not necessarily to find out others who might be interested. So I'm concerned that we're not necessarily really doing a good job at finding out other groups that might be interested in the building. So we have two school board members on the committee, and does that not sort of sound like we are sort of sending it their way anyway? I just, I'm asking the question. I, you know, because we still don't have an explanation from that proposal that came from Meredith, from the school something.
You know, if I.
Please.
You know, the charge is written to review reuse proposals for the former Thomas Memorial Library. We sent a survey out to about 4,000 residents on this topic. We have lots of different comments. We have lots of input that we can make available to this committee. You know, it's really limitless. I hear comments, you know, like we haven't asked anyone. And, you know, nothing could be further from the reality, because, you know, in fact, we did ask everyone. We have hundreds of comments back. We had articles in the Cape Courier about this in addition. So there's a lot of input, you know. What the committee, you know, makeup ought to be, that's up to the council. You know, I do point out that, you know, if you do want to add someone to the committee or position to the committee, you know, you need to figure out as well who would appoint them. Are we going to go through the appointments committee process? If that's the case, this May 9 date is total fiction, and you need to give consideration to, you know, do you want the council chairman to have the authority to appoint any vacancies?
If I could just, if I could just finish. I recognize that we did a lot of, you know, asking townspeople. I'm more interested in different groups, and I know we put that out there, but I'm not sure that maybe all groups understand the process. But I would be perfectly satisfied if the council chair appointed somebody, maybe a towns person, a citizen, senior citizen group person, or something. I mean, if you appoint a senior citizen group person, then maybe somebody says, well, now the senior citizens have their foot in the door. But I guess what I'm saying is, the school board has their foot in the door. So I'm just, I'm throwing that out. Maybe the council's interested, maybe they're not. I just, it bothers me a tiny bit, so.
Okay. Yes, Pat?
I think it does make sense to look at at least having someone else on the committee. I think just in the sense that if there is the perception that the school's proposal, where it became from the hub, does trickle up to be the best, the best, you know, organization to take it over. It may or may not be. But I think it would be, it wouldn't be very difficult. And I think it's a good point to have perhaps you, Molly, the chair, appoint another person, just so that we have, there's thorough vetting of what should be, you know, the future use of that building.
Thank you. Caitlin?
I was just, to clarify, this did start out as a committee to review just that proposal. And then the council, as it often does, massaged it and moved it into reviewing all proposals and expanding it to, you know, different options. And then we decided to include the school board members, not because of their proposal per se, but because of their proximity to the building and that their input would be needed as to whatever we were going to decide to put in to that building, so that we had the school perspective from that angle. My concern with adding more members, which you want to add more members, great, fine, is the timing. Do we add a senior citizen committee member? And then where do we stop? Do we add a historical society member? Do we add, I don't, a Cape Farm Alliance member, a Business Alliance member? Like, where do you stop with adding members and which committees get picked as to who to add? And then to the, you selecting somebody at random, or this one citizen at large, how does that person get selected? Is it just somebody that you happen to know as the chair? Or do we have people apply like they would for the appointments committee? I'm just not sure how, you know, you would do that with full transparency, as we strive to do. I mean, we did that with the recycling, the long-range planning for the recycling center. People were just selected just because they knew people and they thought they'd be good on the committee. There was no appointments process. I was kind of upset about how that committee was selected, because I don't think that's how our town should be putting together town committees by just picking people who know the right people. And so I just don't know how we move forward from here.
Thank you. Other? Yes, Jessica?
You could consider maybe one school board member, one town counselor, one citizen at large, and maybe one senior citizen, one Cape Preservation, Historical Preservation Society member. Given the responses that were on the survey, I mean, to my recollection, I mean, that's again, my recollection, I have to look at it again, those were the most frequent parties of interest that I recall. But that would balance it out more. And with only one councilor and only one school board member, you, you know, you have three more, if you wanted to keep it a committee of five, you'd have three more positions on it. And it certainly would have the perception, better perception of balance. I mean, we've all received a couple of emails recently expressing this concern. I actually was in the IGA a month ago, not, no, about three weeks ago, and someone whom I do not know, and have no idea who this lady is, middle-aged lady, came up and expressed the same thing. Just sort of, you're on the town council, what's going on with that committee, and why aren't there more people on it? Because I responded to that survey, and I don't know what her affiliation is, I don't, you know, one of those quick comments. And it was just one comment, but given, you know, what we've seen recently, it might be, it might be a way to balance the members in the committee. be, it might be a way to balance the members of the committee. I'm certainly interested in figuring that out.
Any other comments on that? Yes, Sarah?
I mean, I'm fine with everything everyone said. I would just say, if we give the committee a clear charge, I trust whoever's on it to be a grown-up. I mean, just because they're two school board members doesn't mean they can't think objectively and understand that they're supposed to be vetting all proposals, dito with the council. Although I'm not opposed to having five different people, I think that's a great idea. I think 80% of success is in the directive we give them. I mean, we've got to figure out what the committee's doing. Is it trying to figure out best use across all the possibilities in town? I think that's what it should be. I mean, we started out saying, figure out if the school board proposal is good, but if people want to back it out and say, what's the best use of it? Give that as the charge. I think people will act with responsible adultness. You know? I mean.
Deb, do we have a motion on the table?
You do.
Remind me of who.
Yes, you do.
Caitlin made the motion. Sarah?
Okay. Excuse me. So the motion that we have right now is item number 44 as written, correct?
Yes.
And do we have a request for an amendment, a proposal or a motion for an amendment on this? And if so, is there someone who would like to make that amendment? And if so, what is it? I've heard a couple of options along the way about what the makeup of the committee might be. Would anyone like to make a motion to amend it?
I would defer to Councilor Sullivan. I liked her idea, but I don't remember exactly what it was.
I think your recommendation was one school board member, one council member, and bringing in a number of other potential participants from other organizations in the community.
Right. I was just thinking, and to Councilor Lennon's comments, yeah, I've no doubt that people would, you know, follow the charge. It's just, it does have the appearance of being weighted currently, the way it's set up. So I would propose an amendment that this committee consists of five members, one town councillor, one member of the school board, one member of the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, one member of the Cape Elizabeth Historical Preservation Society, and one citizen at large. That's right now.
Thank you. Does an amendment require a second? Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion about that? Caitlin? Jamie, go ahead. Jamie?
I was just going to ask how the member at large gets selected.
You had the amendment. Did you want to make a, a mention to your amendment?
The member, well, the member at large could be selected by the appointments committee.
Regarding that last one, I don't have any issue with the chair using discretion to appoint a member at large. I think the chair is more than capable of using fair judgment to do that, and in the interest of expediency to get this moving. As somebody who's on the appointments committee, I'd actually encourage that. I do, I agree with the effort to create better balance among all the potential interested And if we all agree here tonight on a finite list, as Councilor Sullivan has made with her amendment here, I think that's great. I also do somewhat share Caitlin's perspective, though, of, well, why stop at just these groups? I mean, I think there is potential to still have some people then disenfranchised if that's the, if we're saying, well, we'll take one from here, one from here, one from here, but then there are two or three that remain sitting on the outside. I suppose you can argue that, you know, they've been, they've been addressed by the at-large member, but it still seems to be somewhat arbitrary, then, of who gets to be at the table and who doesn't.
Right. Yes, Jessica?
I'm happy to amend my amendment to support the council chair selecting an at-large member. I just hadn't thought of that, but I have full confidence in that. And to Councilor Garvin's comments, I completely sympathize. Yet, the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission has, in their report, you know, repeatedly requested space in town. And we have discussed community services as being an appropriate space, absolutely, and I support that. Yet, there is an organization that has made this request repeatedly in their, you know, and so there is an example of why I would recommend that someone from that, you know, well, former ad hoc committee be invited to participate. And the reason I recommend the Historical Preservation Society is that though they are in temporary quarters that apparently are satisfactory, they are, have expressed interest, repeated interest in the past in that, in that space. So those two jump out because they're on record. And I think probably a citizen at large, and as well as the integrity of the rest of the committee members, would entertain any other request that would come forward. So, thank you.
Caitlin?
I'd just like to point out, the gentleman who spoke first thing this evening about the firing range committee talked about how we put that committee together, and we took people from this side and that side and we put them on the committee, and now they've created a conflict of interest, potentially, that we may need to look into. But is that kind of not what we're doing right now? We've got, the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee has an interest in it, the Historical Society has an interest in it, such and such group could have an interest in it. And aren't we just putting them all on this committee to, so that they, you know, they can push forward, potentially, their interest? When, if we look at, we've got the council and we've got the school board, those are two of the most important, I would feel, two board committee things in our town, the school board and the town council. They are the crux of our town. So it just, to me, makes sense that you would have the school board's interest because of the proximity of the, to the school, and, you know, they are involved in the community as well as the town council, would have the two members. And then maybe we do get a citizen at large to balance it. A citizen who has no interest in any of these other committees, who is totally unbiased in every way as the fifth person, because I think an odd number is always important, and we're going into this with four, so that's not the best idea. So that's just another idea I would like to voice.
Thank you. Jamie?
Yeah, I would suggest actually even, and it won't make me any friends on the school board, but that a three-person subcommittee of the council is probably even better suited than anything that is sort of addressing all these different individual interest groups.
Thank you. Anyone else over here? Yes?
Actually, I'd support either Councilor Sullivan or Councilor, I was going to say Wagner. Oh, my God, I'm sorry.
The other one.
The other one. Proposal. And I'm absolutely happy for the chair to be appointing those. I, just as a side note, I'll say that last year, the council unanimously voted that I could appoint the members of the transfer station committee. And of all the things I did last year, I've sort of been proud of that one, because I think we got some great people. So, anyway, we're off topic, but I will support either one, but I'm happy to have the councillor, the chair, appoint these folks.
Great. Thank you. Before we vote, I would like to say, when we're about to vote on the amendment on the table from Councilor Sullivan with her further amendment, I think, which said that the... Would you like to read it back to us, so I get it straight?
Yes. Currently, the amendment is, the committee would be made up of five members, one member from the town council, one from the school board, one from historical preservation, one from senior citizen, one citizen at large would be appointed by the town council chair.
That's fine. So before we vote on that, I would like to say, I'm, while I appreciate your amendment and your amended amendment, I am going to vote against that, because I would like to see us move forward with this item number 44 as written with one change, which is to add a fifth committee member who would be appointed by the chair, and that would be a person at large from the community. I'd like to keep the emphasis on the two council members that we have already talked about participating on that committee, and we have already had the discussion with the school board, and they've selected their two potential committee members. So in the interest of expediency, I'll be voting against the amendment, because I would like to come back and vote on what's on the table and, excuse me, amend that to incorporate a chair-appointed at-large committee member. Having said that, are we ready to vote on the amendment that's on the table? Yes. All in favor? Did you want to say something, or are you voting? You're voting?
I would like to comment.
Yes, please.
I like Councilor Garvin's recommendation. Hadn't thought of that. And I'd like to withdraw my amendment, and my amendment's my amendment.
I think we have a sense of humor here about amendments.
That is a great idea.
And procedure. So now we're back to having a conversation about the original one, or has anyone made a motion?
We need another amendment.
We need a new amendment. An original motion on the table, then, correct? If you have withdrawn your amendment?
If I've withdrawn mine, I believe your original amendment's on the table.
We had a second on the amendment?
No, we did.
Yes? What was the second? So do we need the second to withdraw her second?
If that is voted down.
Or voted down?
I withdrawn.
Okay, we can vote it. We can vote it down, which would remove it.
Right.
Okay.
We've all withdrawn it. We both withdrawn it. Isn't that?
Point of...
Do you want us to vote on it? Would it be easier?
I think it's cleaner if we vote on it. So all in favor of the motion and the amendment as it was presented by Councilor Sullivan and seconded by Sarah? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. The check mark next to that. Okay, so now we have the original motion back on the table. Yes? And Caitlin?
I'd like to make an amendment to my original motion.
Thank you.
To include a member of the community at large appointed by the council chair.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Sarah?
I agree with you that we should keep this as it stands. We're so far down the road, we've already talked to the school board members. I just would, to reiterate, I think they can be objective, just passionate and fair, and for what it's worth, that makes up a committee of four elected people by the town. So it's a little different than appointments, it's a little different than an ad hoc committee or board. You have four elected people. I guess the assumption is that they're reasonable. So I like, I like, I like two council members, two school board members, and a citizen at large who's just randomly interested for no self-interested reason. I think they're, I think they're capable of weighing it objectively.
Okay. Other comments? No? All in favor of that original motion as amended by Caitlin? All in favor? Yes? Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. I think we have made it through everything tonight, except citizen opportunity for discussion of items not on the agenda. Yes, please, come right back up. And please tell us your name and address again.
I'm Mary Lynn Pine Ridge Road. I just wanted to take an opportunity to address the council as a whole. I'm the aquacultress in Kettle Cove, and should any issues come across your desk, I just wanted to make myself available. And I'm going to stick around for a few minutes. If you have any questions or anything, if anybody comes up to me, I'm happy to hang out and talk it over. Anyway, that's about it.
Thank you. I will say we are about to go into executive session, so my guess is you may be waiting around for a while, waiting for us to come out of that next item. Thank you. Okay. Item number 45-2016, the annual evaluation of the town manager. And we have a draft motion that I would appreciate someone reading for us. Jessica, thank you.
I move that we go into executive session regarding annual evaluation of the town manager in conformers with one MRSA's, I think it's subsection 405, 6A, that we hereby enter into executive session to continue the annual evaluation process for the town manager.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Yes? Wonderful. All right, we will move into executive session. Yeah?